March 31st. Okay, well, go ahead and follow me into ours Tuesday, March 31st, 2020. Please stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, one and all.
Okay, minutes of reports received and filed?
None.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, so tomorrow is April Fool's Day.
Census Day, too.
Um, pretty much everything else is canceled. Well, except for the spring youth turkey, up in season this weekend. But you have to sit six foot apart from your hue.
Not if they're related.
Let's see, I think the only on my calendar is social distancing probably till next week. Everything else?
Yeah, we're a little closer than six feet.
But we're not that close.
Yeah, so just a couple of WebEx meetings. Sure, our sort of meetings canceled. The last one here looks like it's been canceled. We're supposed to have a DevNet meeting next Monday, so. And then our handbrake meeting, are we gonna postpone that again?
Probably. I know Jill's gonna be sending her, her information. And then we'll, I asked her for a draft copy after she's put in all that information. And so then I think we'll take it from there with a draft copy again. Get it back out to all the committee members and then go from there.
I got today at 1:30, Policy Group Communities Call. April 1st is Census Day, so you're officially, it's whoever is living in your house on April 1st is counted. So, and then we've got the EOC briefing at 11:00. I have a bicentennial meeting we're doing via phone at 3:00 tomorrow. Thursday's Policy Group. And CAP Region's gonna do a virtual board meeting, so. Be the first time I've ever done that, so. That's all I've got.
So, you never answered me why the Census wanted to know birthdays and stuff?
They wanna make sure you're still the same Chris Shefferley that, that you were 10 years ago.
No, why do they need my birthday?
Maybe they're gonna send you a birthday card, I don't know.
Well, I just, so like I told you, I mean, me and 95% of the other population don't trust the government with any information, and so, I mean, I don't feel comfortable filling out birthdays for me or my kids, so. I mean, I'll try to fill it out without them, but I don't know if they're upset or not. I mean, they just don't need to know.
I will give, I will send you over. My, my, our representative for the four counties, and you can ask her. I'll send her in.
I'm sure she won't have an answer either.
No, geez.
Don't waste her time.
Okay. Bids and contracts, signings of sole source all systems.
So, we talked about this last week in closed session, because it's security stuff. And we approved the contracts, that's all we have to do, and basically.
Approve the sole source?
Approve the sole so, okay, we approved the sole source, is what we approved last week, so.
You proved your point.
Set it down and run, so. Is, this is a sole source and a contract? Or just a sole source?
The contract has already been signed, it's attached to it. It's been signed, Sam?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it was already signed.
Okay.
So, it's signed and ran, and now we're approving the contract? I guess I didn't follow.
So, we approve that again?
I just want you to approve the sole source.
Okay. I meant that we approved the sole source of all systems.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? New business, county payable review?
I'd ask for approval of a county payable pending review, we just have the one payment eventually today.
The $2.8 million?
Yes.
One big payment. I meant, did we approve the county's payable pending review?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Four.
I'll get you a copy of it, first reading, no action today. This is on the money that we got from the court order from EMS, the big $523,000.
It's the extra funds that we got for the building company?
Yeah. No action today.
Okay. County Collector to present Annual Settlement.
Do you want copies?
Sure.
And if you made a copy, I'll take one.
Yeah.
Uh, attaches are, in front of you, you have my annual settlement. As far as collections and disbursements, my total charges were $96,449,750 bucks. Our actual collections, if you look on the right side when you see some of the credits, we balance within the dollar and 79 cents, which we haven't defined yet. We actually distributed to all the taxing entities, $87,783,836.73. We have delinquent taxes of $3,294,809.54. And on page two and three are actually the breakdowns of those. Page two is current year taxes, the 2019 taxes. And page three is all taxes prior to that. And it shows what the distributions were on page one, the various entities, cities, fire districts, handicap, TIF, state, so on. And we distributed the same amount that we show as collections to be distributed, that $87,783,636.73. On page three, under personal property, you'll see that there are abatements of, it says abatements and outlawed. That total is $111,450.8. Approximately $77,000 of that were outlawed, those were personal property taxes that were over five years old. After, state allows you to write them off after three years, we don't, we do it additional two years before we write them off. And that's, that's about average of what we write off after five years, it's in that $70,000 range. We still have protested, which is virtually all Ameren except for one, and that's $5 million that we're holding in protest right now. That's Ameren going back to 2013. So now we have 13, 14, five years, at least of. Seven years, I'm sorry. Seven years of protested taxes for Ameren, we're still holding.
What'd you say, we had like $3 million something in delinquent?
$3,294,000.
Is that about normal?
It's about normal. About almost $2 million of that is current year taxes. And obviously, the real estate, they have to pay at some point in time, or we put it up for sale on the courthouse steps after, if they're three years delinquent, so. So about two of that $3 million, two is, is current year delinquent. And we have about $1 million, two in prior years delinquent. There are several changes, several bills in the legislature this year that could hinder collecting delinquent taxes, especially on personal property, that the county should be concerned about in all taxing jurisdictions. For one thing, there, Sarah Walsh from Ashland has introduced legislation that would, or the original legislation's introduced, where you no longer have to write proof that you paid your county tax. If they remove that, then, then obviously, there's no incentive for people to pay them if they don't have to prove that they paid them to get their plates removed. I don't know where any of those things are, of course, all, everything's in limbo right now as far as that legislation, but there are all kinds of different, Jill can attest to legislation being introduced to, to deal with personal property taxes and real estate taxes. One of them, our school districts to vote every 10 years to allow anybody over the age of 75 to have their taxes free. And all those taxes, everybody else would have to pay, but pay more to cover those taxes that will be free to individuals over age 75. So there's all kinds of screwy legislation out there.
Some of them screwy ones, though, as much as I hate to believe they even have a chance, they shouldn't have a chance, 'cause the 75-year-old thing, all you gotta do is put everything in your dad's name or grandpa's name, and so. Surely, they're not gaining any.
I hope not. A lot of them just don't make any sense at all.
Well, these people, these sponsors have no concept of the repercussions. And a lot of it's just fielding stuff.
Well, they got how many that they file every year, only a number make it out.
I mean, I'm in favor as much as anybody is having less taxes, but to introduce something without an alternative is what I see as the biggest issue by this legislation, is they're saying, well, you figure out how to replace the.
They wanna do away with personal property, Larry, what'd you figure it costs, it's about $15 million?
Uh, I think it's about $19,000 total.
Yeah, I know our lobbyists are monitoring all those things, and so, anyway, I doubt that anything gets done this year besides the budget, so.
Yeah, I.
Which sometimes it's better to do nothing than to do anything at all, so.
Any questions of thought?
Nope.
I need you all to approve it, I think we presented.
I mean, that we approved the County Collector's Annual Settlement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Larry.
Want a copy of this?
Thank you, Jill.
I'm sorry, I'd like to go back to the number four, the first reading, that is actually that $2.8 million. The other one was, yeah, last week. It's the first reading of the $2.8 that we're gonna pay out today.
Right.
It's the first reading of that budget adjustment.
Right, that's what we said, right?
Oh, I thought I said the EMS thing.
No.
Yeah, that's what I thought Jill said, too.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, so it's really no action today, first reading of the $2.8 million to fix that in the budget.
Yeah.
I hope she did say.
Okay.
I did, I just said the wrong thing.
Okay.
Disinfected, it's getting too.
Too much alcohol, huh?
Yes.
Let's go, keep moving, discussion of courthouse cleaning.
Well, I sent those to Jessica, and she sent you guys an email back with all the different questions that she had asked those vendors, so, and I can put her on speakerphone if you wanna talk to her about them. I think the big question was, there's no guarantee of anything staying clean after they open it back up.
That's right, I was looking at some of the questions, how long does a deep clean last? And it's until people come back in the areas. Does this cleaning guarantee that after the courthouse is opened back to the public, is this building still going to be disinfected? No, as soon as people come back in, they might be sick, it will no longer be disinfected, so.
Okay, here's an issue, too, and Christie brought this up when OA had that positive, and he hadn't been in the office for over a week. She said, by that point, any kind of surface virus is gonna be gone. So, at this point, unless employees are infected, that courthouse has been closed long enough that any kind of surface virus is gonna be dead.
Yeah, I just, to spend, well, Radel's doing it by the hours, you know, $8,000, $9,000 to $13,000, and then as soon as people are back in there, it's no longer clean. To me, that's just a waste of money. I'm not a.
You got some opinions, I know, no?
No, I mean, it'd be nice to have a nice, all clean, and then maintenance start at the beginning, and start by cleaning, but that's an awful lot of money with no guarantees as far as that goes. So. And then every other building will want the same thing.
Right.
Guarantee you. I'm next. This building.
Yeah, the judge brought it to us, or he actually called about it, let's get some prices, we'll take a look at it. Kind of along the same lines as, as Sam, that even cleaning it now, as soon as we let somebody in, it's gonna be exposed to something anyway, so.
I mean, do we look at asking some people that may not be working or were working from home to try to, you know, have right, pull together, try to clean the, clean our buildings, or?
You can good look at that.
I mean, it's part, it's part of your own public safety, I mean, so, you know, not, not everybody's gonna play their, a part, you know, then.
I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, so, we're not gonna all clean, not gonna all help, then, you know, I mean, it does, this doesn't just end tomorrow. I mean, like you said, deep clean tomorrow, Wednesday it's, or Thursday, it's already dirty, so. I mean, we gotta have buy-in from all of our employees, just like we gotta have buy-in from the community that do their part in social distancing and not having gatherings, and.
Well, I think that if we do this, this is more or less gonna be in the common areas, and I think our, our maintenance staff has been doing a lot more of a cognizant, cognitive, cognitive effort, trying to use these big words today, to hit these areas, handrails and anything else, and doors and stuff like that, so. I'm not so sure what benefit this would provide, besides maybe peace of mind for some people. I think that's what a lot of it is. But I also see a lot of offices that are even close to the public that are wiping stuff down every time they touch it or go by it, so I think, I think we're essentially.
Doing some of what you said, yeah.
Are, are we still, do we have plenty of disinfected and stuff as far as you know?
Yeah, and they're using different chemicals that.
I saw you gargling with a wall ago, I mean, it's getting a little crazy.
If it would help, I would.
So, okay.
Well, you know, I clean my office every morning, you know, I kinda wipe it down. And this is countertops, door knobs, light switches, I haven't been getting my light switches, but chairs, computer equipment, I've been getting, small hard service items, so, water fountains, chairs, telephones, I wipe my phone. I think if, you know, has teachers come in before school starts in the fall and clean their classroom? Just tell everybody, come in and clean their office.
I guess I better start then, huh?
If nobody else comes in your office, then you shouldn't have it, unless you yourself are.
No, I just wipe it, I still wipe it, yeah. But I, I just, I can't see spending this much, and then the first time we have the public back in, it's, it's all for naught, it's.
I think it's worth looking at, I'm just, for right now, but on the back burner, we've got it there if we decide we wanna do it or something changes.
Okay.
Well, it says if, if, about a second round of cleaning, and it says, yeah, yeah, if there's a positive case of COVID-19, say like in the courthouse or something, then we might really, truly wanna think about it, but.
You understand that?
I'm just kind of a no.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm good with that for now. Obviously, things are changing all the time, so, we need to address it. At a later date, we can do that.
I do wanna give you an update on the hail that came this weekend. I'm up to 19 vehicles right now.
Okay.
And the Health Department building, at least nine of the skylights and the roof is pretty bad.
Okay.
So, I'm working with Rick Knoll on all of those, so.
Vehicles at the Health Department, too, then?
All four of them there, and then the rest of them are sheriff's vehicles.
EMS didn't have any?
They have not reported anything to me. I guess I should reach out to David and find out.
See, if you lived in God's country out east, we don't get that.
It's all God's country?
Except we got hit by the tornado.
But this is gonna, this is seems to be out no more.
Public Works didn't have any either?
They have not reported any. It was kinda out on the west end, kinda.
We might wanna check with EMS and Public Works and just see.
I can do that. That's all, I'll keep you abreast of that.
Okay, Kristin had asked, too, that we talk about the administrative leave.
Right.
For the next two weeks, because we, they need some guidance.
So, I just think it's gonna be longer than, than two weeks. And so. I mean, I still think that, you know, we rotate shifts, we, you know, we, we find things for people to do at home, whatever that may be, and then, you know, and keep them on, on the salary. I mean, I mean, all those people are salaried employees, and we'll, we'll just do what we can and leave it up to the department heads and elected officials to make those decisions and, and continue to pay people. But we have to try to find things for them to do at home. And that's, I'd say that'll be a challenge for some. And, you know, if we can adhere to social distancing here with people that have to come in, I think everybody's doing a pretty good job of doing that, so.
Yeah, I think. I've got a conference call with United Way and Bax, just looking at maybe creating, like, a couple of numbers where people who have questions on COVID-19 can call in, and, and they can be directed to the, to the right place or proper department or whatever. And so I asked Dan, I said, well, who, who's gonna man these, and that's, she was saying it would be, it would be a good opportunity to man it with, with city and county employees who are maybe, you know, off. And I said, well, you're gonna have to give them some information, or, I mean, somebody calls me up and asks me about something, most of them, I'm probably not gonna know the answer, but anyway. I think Christie and, and Sierra and a bunch of others are gonna be on this conference call if you wanna. Sit, it's 11 o'clock today, we can.
What was it on?
It's, United Way is spearheading it, and it just, you know, people have a lot of fears and a lot of questions about, about COVID-19, so they have a number they can call. You know, not, not the 800, not 877, which is DHSS, and it's not, I guess, the Health Department's getting a lot of.
Sure.
Inundated with a lot of calls, too, so this would be a number, people can just call up and, and get some direction as to who they should call or what they should do, if, you know.
I know I did talk to Christie about that the other day, is that, would there, would there, could we reach out to the phone companies or something, I mean, to try to have, have them help us with maybe some of these abundance of calls? And maybe we can have some of our employees that may not have stuff to do, but would we be able to forward?
That's what.
Would we be able to teach them or train them on, you know, just common questions and whatever, and just have them answer the phones, and then maybe they could do that from home to just, I mean, I'm just.
I think that's what, I think that's, that's Ann's kinda idea, is, yeah, could I, my question was, who's gonna man it? 'Cause you can't have, you can't have doctors, you know, at the hospitals doing it, but it can direct them to, you know, some of these, so.
I know Christie had said that the city had, was gonna have a couple people that were gonna help, maybe answer some phones, and they were gonna redirect to, to another line or, or something, but, I mean.
We're gonna, the, it's a conference call with the, he's the former Emergency Management Director of Camden County, and he had set this up once before in Camden County, and they said it worked very well, so. I, I don't know, Ann called me about 5:00 o'clock last night, but it, you know, it's, it might be something that some of our employees could do.
I mean, so, where you guys at on this interview, along the same lines on the admin leave? And then, I'd like to just discuss, you know, a couple other items that go along with that, but just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think, I, with, this is, these are some of the strangest times I've ever seen, so.
You're old.
They're still, still some of the strangest times I've ever seen, I mean, it, it's, you know, uh, we, we wanna, you know, keep our employees safe, we want them to, uh. So I think.
Think what?
I think, I think staggering them, the way we're doing it is fine, you know, we could, we could do admin leave and, and make it, you know, 40 hours over the next two weeks. So then the department heads can kind of stagger them as, you know, as they, or, you know, elected officials can, can stagger them, and if we can find something for them to do from home or something, then that's fine, too, but.
I guess define admin leave, that means we're gonna pay them to not work.
Basically, so, I mean.
Then if we do that, it causes a real problem with the ones that are working, and if there were an emergency or if we're paying them time and a half. And if this goes beyond two weeks, I just, I just, I think it's gonna be a bigger headache. So I think we just need to kind of work with, if, if you can truly work from home, then work from home. If everybody is physical. If everybody is physical distancing themselves. And we've got, I've never seen so much hand cleaner in my life. I mean, why don't we do this during regular flu season too? But, um, we've put out the order. If you're, if you're not feeling well or if you've traveled, don't come in. We've got the doors locked. I don't know what else we can do. I mean, there's, you're, you're gonna have to come in at work at some point. You can't let this run your life. So.
I'm not.
I think the admin leave's gonna be a problem.
So, I mean, we're, you know, we're staggering people working in different times. I mean, you know, I think everybody's doing what we need to do. And we're continuing to pay people. And so, whether those people are working from home or not, they're still getting paid. I mean, nobody's, nobody's been told that they not getting a paycheck. But, I mean, it's, it's really, it's really maybe some office staff that we're, that we're talking about, you know? Public works is still working, you know, Juvenile's still there, Sheriff's Office is still there, EMS is still there. I mean, so it's basically some office staff that, that we're, need to just try to find things for them to do. And, and they're gonna continue to get paid. But once we go down, down the admin leave, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a huge nightmare with all the other departments. And, and it'll be time that those, those people may not be able to take. I mean, I mean, right now, they're, they're not taking vacation, they're not taking sick, they're not taking comp. They're not taking any of that stuff, I mean, unless, unless they're able. But, but some of these departments, they can't take, can't take time off. I mean, and if we have issues with, you know, people in the sheriff's department getting this virus or people in EMS getting the virus, I mean, it, it shortens our staff even more. So, they even have to work more. So, they can't take the benefits that they already got. I mean, they'll end up losing, though, I mean, if they have maxed out their time, they'll end up losing it at the end of the year. Or we'll have to pay it out or.
So, do we just wanna turn a blind eye and, and let things keep going the way they're going and?
I don't, I don't think, I don't consider it turning a blind eye. I mean, personally, I mean, you know, we're, we're handling the situation and we're allowing department heads and elected officials to, everybody's still working and, and trying to do what they can while, while dealing with the situation. So, you know, that's alternating people every couple of days or every other week or whatever that may be. And, um, you know, limiting public access.
Yeah, I don't see it as turning a blind eye. I think we're just handling a crappy situation in creative ways right now for people to be able to work from home. And you're not gonna be able to get as much done from home as you would say in the office. Well, maybe you can get more done if you don't have anybody bothering you like the commissioners, you know? Finance has been getting a lot done lately since we're not up there bugging her as much. But you can still work from home, maybe not as effectively or efficiently or whatever. You can still be accessible for phone calls or emails. So, I think just, that's just to keep trying to handle it the way we are right now. If somebody just feels like they need to leave or be gone away from it and don't wanna work from home, they can take, uh, if they wanna take sick leave, annual leave, if they got some time they can take. If they're gonna go on vacation and leave the state, they might wanna plan an extra two weeks when they get back for being on vacation. I don't want them coming around me.
Right.
So, I mean, it's one thing to go, if you're gonna be in the mountains of Colorado and you're not stopping anywhere else and seeing anybody else. But if you're gonna go, I don't care if you just go to St. Louis at this point, it's kind of an epicenter.
I would go to St. Louis.
Right, but I mean, you know, we have an order in place that says, do not travel. I mean.
Do not travel, but you have all kinds of exemptions.
Well, I realize that.
Family or for work or for whatever. We've got places open in Jersey City right now that are bringing people from six, eight, ten, twelve different counties. So, I mean, it's, it's just one of the things that everybody's gotta be responsible for themselves. And there's only so much that we can do. We can't stop every auto accident. And we just, I think Cole County's been doing a good job of it right now. So, everybody's trying to do the right thing. I mean, even going to, if you gotta go get groceries, one person, one cart, simple things like that. And, you know, I didn't think about that the first couple of times I went in there. It was, you know, more than one person. But obviously, if I just gone by myself, my cart's coming back with beer. So, I gotta send somebody else to once, once in a while get some bread and eggs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I think people are doing their part. I think people are conscious, but, and I think some of the, the stores, you know, the lumberyards and, and some of the places are, aren't letting you come into the office. You know, it's like, give us your order, uh, plumbing supply houses, you know? Call in your order and we'll bring it out to you. So, I mean, you know, they're, everybody's trying to do their part and so we just need.
The ones that the order are directed at are the ones that are not gonna comply anyway.
Right.
So, that's just the bad thing. Still got, you know, people that are doing whatever they wanna do and that's.
I mean, I just, you know, if people are, if our employees are violating the order, I feel like that we need to have, we need to reprimand those people for doing that. I mean, because if, if anybody needs to adhere to the order, it should be county employees. And so, I mean, if you're gonna go outside of, you know, if you live outside of that next county area, so be it. You know, you gotta get home. I, I get that. But, I mean, if you're taking a trip somewhere, you know, that, uh, that's just not a good decision and I don't think that, um, I mean, but those people need to realize that when they get back, you know, if they get back, that they're gonna have to take their time and they better have time to take or they're not gonna get paid. So.
So, we can get way down in the rabbit hole on this one. And we, we talked about this when the order came, was, you know, that was gonna be the adjoining counties in the order. A lot of people have, uh, lake homes, um, home away from homes. If you wanna go to, uh, Truman Lake or down in, you get as far away as like Warsaw, and that's several counties away. If you go do that, you don't come into contact with anyone. You're in your cabin, you're on your canoe or boat, nobody else, and you wanna come back and, you know, be a part of the county workforce yet, you know? But at what point do we say, no, you gotta wait two weeks? So, it's, there's no clear line. There's a lot of gray area there. So, if you're gonna go spring break in Florida and then wanna come back, don't come around me. Cause if you're gonna endanger my life, I'm gonna get a little aggravated.
Yeah, I mean, so for our employees, they're not only endangering themselves and their families, but they're also endangering, endangering other employees that they work with. And so, and that, that could hit us negatively, not only in health insurance costs, um, but, uh, if somebody were to be asthmatic or have respiratory issues and now you've, you've done, you've made a poor decision and now you've jeopardized someone else's health. And so, um, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a, uh, I mean, I, I see both sides, but at the same time, I mean, I think we need to try to urge strongly encourage our employees to abide by the order. I mean, um, I mean, I get what you're saying. I mean, you're gonna go fishing or wherever, but try to do it close to home. I mean, if you're going to the lake or Truman, don't stop and get gas. So, don't get gas for your boat.
One of the, uh, people that tested, tested positive here in Cole County was from Illinois. And they had been to Florida for spring break and they went to Illinois, well, Illinois is shut down. So, they decided, well, they go down to their lake home. And then by the time they got to Jefferson City, one of them was sick. So, they tested him and then they went on down to the lake. Well, yeah, he, he, he had COVID-19. So, I think Camden County, I don't know where he was counted. I don't know if he'd be counted in Camden County or, or in Illinois. But, you know, that's the thing with, you've got a lot of people passing through that have been exposed to it. So, that's kind of the problem. I think Camden County, I would bet most of theirs are from people coming from St. Louis and everywhere else trying to find a safe haven.
Well, the one that did have it went on the pub crawl, which has been over two weeks ago. I was surprised that number didn't shoot up. I heard that, I thought, oh, my goodness.
There's a lot of stupid.
So, I mean.
Pub crawl, Jeff?
Huh?
Is it a late pub, pub crawl?
Yeah, it's just two weeks ago before all the orders and stuff and.
Did you go?
So, no, I'm too old for that.
Yeah, it's just, uh, you know, there's, there's lots of state parks around too that, you know, people are outdoor, outdoor recreation. Well, I mean, so, I get it, you know, my kids wanna have friends over. I get it, you know? But it's no, it's no for everybody. It's stay at home, don't travel. I mean, it's, you can go walk, you can go do stuff in, in this community. But, I mean, until everybody does that, this thing is gonna go on for a long time. I mean, so, I get it, there's not a mechanism for enforcement of that stuff. But, I mean, I don't know how we get that point out there. It's stay at home.
Then, everybody at home.
Well, I mean, so.
That's the only way you're gonna do it.
I mean, then, you know, then the next.
Get their hand cleaner out and.
The next, the next order is to shut every business down. I mean, grocery stores, everything. I mean, manufacturers, you know, all right, you guys can't abide, shut everything down. Nobody leaves their house.
Good luck with that one.
Yeah.
What was the question?
Oh, we're talking about administrative.
No.
We need a cure. That's what we.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's what we need is, yeah, cure, vaccine, something, but.
So, on admin leave, I'm a no on it right now. I'll keep trying to work with it the way we are currently. People, if they have to, stagger work schedules, work from home if you can. I think with all these people working from home, that should free up a lot of offices. We won't even need any new buildings. Find out how many people need an office.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good maintaining our current workforce, you know, taking care of our employees and trying to do what's best for, for each office. And I don't know.
And to maintain continuity of government, which is one of the objectives, so.
And I, I don't know where the, I think probably one of the questions is, is that, you know, certifying time sheets and different things that come down to that. And so, I mean, salaried employees obviously would continue to be salaried employees. And we could verify the, uh, certification of time or whatever that may be. I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the questions, um, anybody might be having, but, I mean, I'm not gonna slap somebody's hand if somebody only gets thirty hours in in a week while this is going on. Trying to do what's best for the employees and maintain, maintain essential services and staffing.
Yeah, maybe we can get some of them to help man a hotline or something like that. Yeah, so. Okay, is that enough direction, Deb?
Yeah. I'm not fine, but I'm fine.
So, just one question on accounts payroll. Are we waiting to see who that check needs to be cut to?
Yes. I'll pray text you.
Okay, that's fine. I can approve it once, once you know that or. Anything else?
Nope. Any other issues come before the commission?
All right, I mean, we staying in recess till four thirty?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So, Debbie, this here, they sent me a different bill for it. I don't know why. I've told them to take that off of ours for ever.
Well, Sam.
What's that?
It was Sam's. Oh, that was Sam's bill.
Oh, he needed that?
Well, I just wanted some clarification.
Right.